The cities. Unbelievable.
Crazy.
It is way crazy.
Um, I talked to, uh, Huber Scott.
Mm-hmm.
And the item, you know, the, the cannabis thing is, is not a public hearing. Okay. So I won't be opening a public hearing, but I'm going to explain, uh, to the commissioners and to the public is that, uh, this is up for discussion of the, the ordinance itself, any changes to the ordinance.
Hmm.
We're not discussing the overall huge issue.
Topic, yeah. Well, and so they can put in speaker cards that speak on it, but it's not a public hearing.
Correct.
So, yeah.
So I will not be opening a public hearing.
Yeah.
Oh, and I have. I have some corrections on the minutes. You want me to give them to you now, or?
Just wait, 'cause.
Or go through them?
I, I can't, we can't answer those questions, 'cause.
No, it, it's just some change, some. You call, you, you list, uh, Brand, Vice Chair Derling Jenkins, and then Robinson instead of Chairperson Robinson. On, on item, uh. At the bottom there of item two, and then on item three. So. You want me to bring those things up?
Uh-huh. Yeah, during the meeting evening of that, just, so where are you?
Okay. On items two, at, at the bottom, just above where it says three.
Uh-huh.
Where you list the commissioners. Brand, Vice Chair Derling Jenkins, and should be Chairperson Robinson.
Oh, right there, okay.
Okay, and then on item three, it's the same thing. Should be Chairperson Robinson. And then Chapman should be a capital C.
Which one did I lower case the Chapman to?
Seconded.
Motion, I'm good.
The Chapman.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll bring those up, so it's on the record.
Yeah, so those are the only three things that you caught that.
Uh. I think so.
Not bad.
Yeah, that was, that was it. I don't like surprising people. I've always. Huh?
Bless your heart.
Yeah, if, if I had a, you know, especially if it's a controversial comment or whatever, but I'd always come in and talk to staff the day before. You know, let them know, get them a head up, so they can, you know, don't get surprised. The only surprise I like is a birthday. Now, we have plenty of blue. Howdy.
We have three.
Seventy-one.
Do you have a, um, do you have, I mean, a consensus? A minion, people?
Yeah, yesterday was real long, today was just mind-blowing.
Uh, well, we needed to make sure we kind of, at least, were.
Um. There's, you had a whole lot of comments on the ordinance at the joint meeting, I think.
Uh, yeah, I had a few. I don't know if it was a lot, but it was, it was a few.
There, there's a few.
Yeah.
Are you gonna make those here, so they're for the record here?
Uh, I, I can, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that's what this meeting is about, any changes, and if you wanna make a change, we can discuss it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So far.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, just to see who had what questions and if it was addressed.
Uh-huh.
I was gonna see who, you know, who has what questions and if my question might be addressed by somebody else.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so little, you know, and then what I'll have to do is also make those and put out the official document and have, that's like, I mean, no, I'm like, what I'm probably gonna work out is, is waiting for me to be like, after, like, one day.
Honestly, I don't see the, the questions that I have being able to answer because of the staff that, you know, who, who have here, so, you know, if, I don't know if it's just, uh, Gary here, or. I don't know, I don't know.
I think these are, uh, staff people down here.
Oh, Gary won't be here today?
No, he'll be here.
Well, no, he, yeah, there is, there is a valid office.
Yeah, he's here.
I, I guess he can answer questions.
I, I, I don't know. I guess we'll see.
But, uh, the purpose is to make any thing we wanna change into actual ordinance.
And then why just looking at that, so that it is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
In the future.
Does that start when the, yeah, well, goes down, or?
No, it's on the per- creation.
It's on there.
'Cause I have to put it on about two minutes early to make sure it's working.
Okay.
Do a slide next.
I, I have, like.
That's available by phone.
Some, see, I, well, some questions I have just are maybe old planning questions that, like, you know, Dawn or something, the older planners would know, but, um, I don't think anybody has the information right here on hand, 'cause they haven't been, it's all, on, I don't know. I don't know. I should've asked for the, the downtime over that, some other things like that.
Yeah, I think it is, I think the map that are showing the boundary, it affected it.
It's, no, it's not.
Yeah.
It is.
So, the ones in red are the schools?
Well, there's.
Non-agenda, yeah, which never.
Uh, sometimes school property is red, yeah.
You like it? Yeah.
Property.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Uh, I have a lower mind, too.
Somebody was pretty short. Ooh.
What's going on?
Yours work, that one over there doesn't work.
Well, this would be highway seven, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the rest of it just helps me know I can move minutes later, so that I can.
You get to be the leader tonight, huh?
They get to l you down if you've talked too much.
Good.
Yeah, well, myself.
We need guys like you. Live cameras recording. Are they gonna record us now?
Yeah, we're on live.
We are?
Live TV. Right now, what you're saying is heard around the world.
Good. City council is.
So go party with me.
City council is on.
How are you?
I'm very hot.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Oh.
I'm good, how are you?
Paul Gary Lammon. Uh, yes. Hey, what's up, Gary?
Oh, you know, same old thing.
Yeah, I talked to Scott Huber.
Nice.
Cannabis thing is a discussion.
Yeah, it's just a discussion. So.
It's, it's changing the, moving jobs, the ordinance, everything, we ought to, so I'm gonna make sure the public understands that.
Well, yeah.
When I open it up, so.
Yeah, it'll, yeah, I don't even think they'll be here for it, it's just, it's a whole, we're, we're, we're a private discussion, you know.
And you're on live TV right now.
So that way it just, uh, keeps us in, uh, for what we think about, what we want, for the, the, I guess, the show.
Cause on the conference.
Well, we'll, we'll have one more hearing.
Absolutely.
That will be a public hearing.
Yeah. I, yeah, well, I believe we have twenty-seven.
Yeah, September.
It's just a way to make a decision.
Yeah.
And that decision will be decided.
Right.
Standing room only. Correct?
Huh?
Standing room only on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I imagine so.
I have a question. That map that we received just this week.
Yep.
That shows the zoning that is in effect for that type of thing. Those little spots.
On this map?
Yes.
Okay, what that is, showing the, um, the distance boundaries where cannabis stores are not allowed.
That's.
So, six hundred feet from, from a school. Cannabis is not allowed. That's what this boundary is. The ordinance says that cannabis businesses.
Green.
Green, yes, uh. Somebody, um, it's zoned. Where, uh, cannabis stores can be applied for. On, only those green areas. Is where somebody could apply for business.
Because they're already zoned that way.
Because they're zoned that way, correct.
But if you wanna open a store somewhere else, then you have to apply for a rezone.
Correct.
Yeah. That's, that's the way I understood it. Those are pretty silly green spots. They're off in some never Neverland.
Yeah.
This is not for this, but.
This is all new to everybody, right? To keep them maintained, or if they wanna dedicate it, all right, but you're gonna maintain it, 'cause we don't have that now.
Right.
Cover the state license, we don't know what it is. License is based off of what, you know, you gotta have some basis to go on it, so you're not, you know, you have, you have, you have, you know, you have, you know, you have, you know, you have, you know.
Six hundred feet?
Six hundred feet?
Yes, it is.
Sorry, Chair, do you mind?
Right now. He's suffering from this surgery, yeah, sick. No, it's just recovering, yeah, very, pushing himself a little bit hard.
Question for you, is the, um, D R Horton, the west side. Side of Larken? The east side that, that.
I believe that that's the project they're looking at.
Yeah, they, they've already, they've already, uh, bid on it, so.
Uh, I think we have it under contract, it hasn't closed, though.
No, but they've, I think they've paid some.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I, like I say, I'm not involved on it at all, I just heard.
Well, if it ever comes before us, I got, I can't, I gotta.
Oh, so you guys have bid on it?
Well.
Oh. Well.
But I'm in discussion with them on it, too, so.
There's no reason for, it's already an entitled subject.
Yeah, so that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, there's, there's, it's, it's, there's no reason for it to come before the, thank you, Mr.
You're gonna recuse yourself from which items?
Uh, let's see here, Chair. Resort, yeah?
I know, there's three of them, I wasn't sure, it was all three.
Oh, you're writing five, I guess. And it's only a discussion item.
That's right. Discussion.
Did you wanna leave? No, you can't.
Change the ordinance to language?
You guys got more of it here, so you're all right.
Yeah, so it would be fine, yeah.
Oh, one thing is, is for him. Of course it is.
No.
No.
Oh.
Really?
Yeah.
I talked to Scott Huber, and he said no.
Really? Did you?
Yeah, 'cause you're in the room listening to the discussion.
No. Seems like me and, uh, I, I, I'm a citizen.
I don't, I don't. Yeah, well, you can temporarily design it. Okay. Are we ready? Everything on?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. I'm calling the August twenty-third nineteen, or two thousand eighteen Pledge of Allegiance to Order this time. Roll call.
Commissioner Brand.
Here.
Commissioner Britton.
Here.
Commissioner Chapman.
Here.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Here.
Commissioner McDavid. Vice Chair Derling.
Here.
And Chairperson Robinson.
Will everyone rise for Pledge of Allegiance? Salute, again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and be seated. Okay. Next thing is instructions to individual who wish to speak on agenda items. Um. There's blue sheets. Oh, yeah. Slide around here. There are blue sheets over there, uh, if you fill one out and give them to the clerk here. Uh, she'll call your name when it's time for you to come up and, and talk. The second item is, um, public comments. Now, if anyone has, uh, a concern or an issue, and it's a planning issue, and wants to talk to the planning commission here about it, uh, they can come and do that. Uh, the commission cannot take any action on that. I will take notes, but, um, no action can be taken, so we'll just listen to whatever it is, uh, concern you have. Okay, correspondence, none?
Approval of the minutes.
Chairperson. Derling, um, you do have public, people that wanna speak during public comment.
Oh. Forgot to ask you.
Pamela McBride.
That's on a non-agenda item, right?
I don't know if this is the correct place to present it, but, uh, I'm Pamela McBride, lived in Oroville for ten years. At once, uh, in the early eighties, worked for Nevada County Building Department as a dispatcher and clerk. So I have some interest in civic things, but I was walking my dog in the parks recently, yesterday, and discovered the neglect. And I'm thinking, where's the money going? Um, there were some tree trimmings from sprouts at, uh, M L K Park, Martin Luther King Park, and, uh, they were all bundled up in piles, but not taken away, so they're all dead and dry. All it would take is something to ignite them. And then I took her over to, um, Hewlett Park, um, where the big engine is, and, uh, there's no water there, um, broken facilities, closed bathrooms, dead, dying plants. It would be a beautiful park, um, but it has passed its heyday, it's very neglected, except for mowing the lawn. Um, so I'm just thinking, what has happened to the money that's supposed to maintain these things? You know, just put things in, then ignore them, or let them go to waste? And I don't know if this is the right place, it's probably a deal for the, um, Public Works Department.
I would talk to them, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
You can also talk to the Parks Commission.
There is a Parks Commission.
And, uh, I missed the city council meeting, so when is the Parks Commission?
Do we know when the Parks?
Uh, this is Gary Lammon, Chief Building Official, Fire Marshal, and, um, Head of Public Works. At this point in time, uh, we don't have a scheduled Parks meeting, because there's nothing to go on the agenda, but this has been addressed and was addressed at the last council meeting Tuesday night. And so we are working on it, but we do have, um, staffing, and we do work on those parks and, uh, and cleaning them up. But as soon as we're done and we walk away, um, unfortunately, they get vandalized, and, uh, sprinkler systems, uh, in themselves get damaged and vandalized, and it makes it difficult to keep them maintained.
Well, they're not being maintained.
Yeah.
If they're broken, fix it.
Okay, I'm sure they're taking notes, and thank you for.
Okay.
Bringing it to the attention. Anyone else?
That is your only public speaker.
Okay. Again, no, um. Okay, we'll go to approval of the minutes. Are you hearing me? I can't tell. Can you hear her?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
And Vice Chair Derling, you do have one public speaker on the, item number one.
Okay. On the, on approval of the minutes? Somebody wants to come up and talk about approval of the minutes? Who is it?
Michael Evans.
Sorry, Mister Chairman, number one for my agenda was the law line adjustment, I don't care if you choose.
Okay.
That was it. Mm-hmm.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the August ninth.
Well, I wanted to find out if there's any changes, any changes? Um, I'll wait till you guys are done, and I'll make mine. Um. Under item two at the bottom, where it lists the commissioners. It lists Robinson, should be Chairperson Robinson. Same thing with item three, should be Chairperson Robinson. And on that same item three, uh, staff, the motion was presented by Derling, and seconded by Chapman, and Chapman should be capital C. That's all I had, I'm ready for a motion. Wanna make a motion here?
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of, uh, August ninth with the corrections mentioned.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Call the roll. Well, there we go. Any changes to the vote? Vote's complete.
Motion carries.
Okay, item two, staff?
If, I, I'm gonna, um, recuse myself for the next three items, item two, item three, and item four.
Okay.
So, you can just call me back when we hit item five, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, just. Round on my cage.
So this is, um, Public Works Lot Line Adjustment?
Yes, uh, this is Lot Line Adjustment. Um, we did review this at the last meeting, um, for the Bratton. Um, it was reviewed and approved at that time, however, due to, uh, improper notifications sent out to the property owners within three hundred feet that the meeting was taking place. Uh, we had to resend that and bring it back up to the table today.
Okay.
So, uh, proper notification had been sent out the following day from the meeting that we had, our last meeting, to property owners within the three hundred feet. And, um, and it appears also, we have a speaker that would like to speak on this.
Any commissioners have questions of staff? We've opened the public hearing for item two.
Michael Evans.
Michael Evans, one-ten Sharp Road, I'm representing the owners involved in the Lot Line Adjustment. We've reviewed the required conditions, we're happy with them. If anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer them. If any public has any questions, I appreciate the opportunity to respond to them, thank you.
Do we have anybody else? Close the public hearing? Any discussion by staff, by my, uh, commissioners? Seeing none, ready for motion someone?
I'll make a motion that we accept, um, P W one-eight-zero-five-dash-zero-zero-two Lot Line Adjustment.
That's, maybe actually, sort of, resolution, it's a.
Oh, it's the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, adopt the resolution of P two zero-one-eight-dash-one-ten.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, ready for the vote? Didn't mind go. Uh, there we go. Anyone make, change their vote? Voting's closed.
Motion carries.
Now, a young lady brought up a slip, is that on something we've already discussed?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you, Commission. Our, uh, second one is, uh, tentative parcel map, one forty-three Valley View. We did review this also at our last meeting, there were some questions that did come up about the, uh, conditions of approval, um, engineers staking, and also, uh, public notification of the meeting being taken place. Uh, notifications were sent out the following day as well, to the properties within three hundred feet. Uh, there has been some. There has been some amendments made to the conditions of approval since the last meeting. One would be, number three, the applicant shall add adjoiningers on map for clarity purposes. Item four, there will be at least one monument needed to be set on the center line of Valley View Drive. And then, number five, provide public utility easement along the Valley View Drive front edge of eight feet. We have gone over that with the applicant. The applicant's representatives are here, if they'd like to speak.
Any commissioners have a question of staff? Hmm?
Should that be after?
No, yeah. Open the public hearing for item three.
Steve, I don't want to butcher your last name. Sorry, Steve Bat- yes.
Yeah, I'm Steve Body. I'm owner of seventy-six Pollock Court, and I want, I don't want any decision made on that transitional housing. I don't believe.
Excuse me, Steve.
Yeah.
That's for our next topic.
Item four, sorry.
Well.
It's item four.
It's item four, because what happened is, item one was identified, which was actually the approval of the minutes, so it threw everything out.
Okay.
So, thank you, Steve. We'll give you the opportunity to talk on that.
Do we have anybody else that wants to comment?
Richard Roper, representing the Connors. We have no problems with the conditions of approval since they've been.
That's modified?
Yes, modified, yeah.
Okay.
So, I've been in touch with the city engineer and Gary, so everything's, seems to be good. If anybody comes up to have a complaint, I'd like to speak afterwards. Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak on this item? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Comments?
I guess, just curious what the intent of a single monument set on the center line would be?
That is a request from our consulting engineer. Because of the maintenance of the roads, and when the roads are maintained, we lose those reference points. And so during the course of tentative parcel maps or lot line adjustments or splits, we have them put a pin, he recommends put a pin out there for placement for future reference.
Maybe the surveyor, would the surveyor know the intent of the city engineer?
I questioned him about it.
Come on up.
What good does it do to put in one point? Takes two points? He said, no, one point, so I'm putting in one point.
That's, that, the question that I would have. So I would say, I'd say you'd at least need three points for the curve and the tangent, so.
Well, it shows, you'd put it at the end of the tangents?
Yeah.
At the beginning of the curve?
Mm-hmm, so you'd at least have, at least have three.
But, but he only requested one, and I told him, I tried to talk him out of doing the one, and he said, no, no.
I, I, I would say that also. I would say one is useless, so.
But there's other, there's other property points out there, so.
Would, and that wouldn't be replacing a lost corner? The, the one point?
No, it's out in the street.
Yeah, so there was nothing?
Side line points are already set.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I disagree with putting one in, but I'm putting one in.
Okay.
And on this situation, staff is following the direction of our consulting engineer, who does sign these off and submit them to the county for final mapping.
Okay, I guess if the applicant and surveyor are okay with the city engineers.
Is there any other comments from anyone? I think I already closed the public hearing, but I'll do it again. Any discussion amongst the commissioners? If not, ready for a motion? No motion?
I motion that we adopt resolution number P two zero one eight dash zero eight, with conditions.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? Take, take the roll of the vote. So anyone want to change their vote? Seeing none, voting's closed.
Motion carries.
Okay. Open the public, oh, no, hang on. Got to understand, I'm new at this. Staff, you want to tell us about the?
Okay, our, our next one is a proposed large residential care home facility. We are going to be putting this off to the next month's meeting. I have spoken to the applicant. There has been some comments, phone calls, and concerns in this. So with that, we are going to delay this for thirty days for our next meeting. I would like for everybody to realize and recognize that this is allowed in the zoning, but under conditions of approval. So with that, we're going to get together and have a meeting with myself, the applicant, and those that are in concern, and come to an agreement on, on some conditions that we can make this work. So, and for those that are in the audience, we'll be making contact, but I would like to set that meeting up for next Thursday, which would be Thursday, the thirtieth. And I would prefer to set it up for around one o'clock here at the city hall, in the fireside room. This would give us the ability to all sit down in a professional manner and discuss this, and come out with some reasoning and a better understanding and explanations as to what's happening. Because, as I indicated, it is allowed by use, by the zoning. But it is, there are condition, it's a conditional use process. And, and there was proper notification given this time last meeting, we brought this up. There were questions of not proper notification, which was accurate. And we sent out information to the property owners within three hundred feet of the property from corner points the following day. So notification had gone out. And so that's why the, some of them did not receive it, unaware why they hadn't, but we only got one letter back. And so all the others were sent out, but they do go to property owners. And some of the property owners were not aware of it. That's why they made the phone calls to me, and we came up with this agreement.
Fireside room is where, next door?
Next door here. The applicant is here, and we did have Steve come up to talk as well.
I'm going to, I'm going to open the hearing.
Yes.
Open the public hearing and?
Ronald Reed.
Ronald Reed, want to come up and talk?
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
So my name's Ron Reed. I'm a, I've been a public defender in Buick County for thirty years. I'm president of Buick County Bar Association, and I'm the president of a nonprofit corporation called Base Camp Village Incorporated. And president of my audience is my wife, and together with my wife, we've funded a nonprofit organization with some other friends, and we've accumulated the money adequate to build a facility on, in Pollock's courts. Our goal is to have a transitional housing place, where we can take people who are suffering from mental disability, get them stabilized into a place. We work with behavioral health and other social agencies. We, our goal is to get them to where they can either do one of three things. Operate on their own by medication and training, or return back to family, once they also reunite with their family and they learn how to live their life through help and behavioral health. Or the third way, we, we aim to get people off the street, is we direct them to a higher level of care. There are certain facilities that, even locked facilities, that may be available. That may be the way that we get somebody off the street. So, somebody on the street who is suffering from mental illness cannot get well unless they get a place where they can be stabilized and they can get help. So if we get all the service, uh, social services available, we get them into a place where they can be safe and cared for, then ultimately, our goal would be to transition them to another place. They can stay in this facility up to two years, but our goal is to get them moving into other more permanent places. So I appreciate your consideration this evening. I'll reserve a little time if anything else comes up. Thank you.
Got somebody else?
Next would be Steve.
Next meeting?
Paul Stoner.
Yeah, I think I'll wait for the next meeting. I was, I just, my name is Paul Stoner, and I'm new to this too. I was asked at the last minute to come and represent a boss that I work for in a facility, assisted living facility, right on Fog Street and Paula. So she asked me at the last minute, because I'm very tired there, to come and represent her viewpoint. But I think I will wait till, I think that'd be better if I was, come in next month.
Yeah.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion to continue to what meeting date?
We got Thursday, the thirtieth, at one o'clock. Oh, for, our next meeting date?
Yes.
Will be September twenty-seventh at seven o'clock.
Motion to continue to that date.
I make a motion that we continue this item P two zero one eight zero nine till the twenty-eighth, you say?
September twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Take a vote? Anyone want to change their vote? Voting's closed?
Motion carries.
Yep, yep. Oh, yeah, that's right. Hey, the next item is a discussion item on the cannabis zoning ordinance. I want everyone to understand, we're not discussing the merits pro con of cannabis itself, but on the language in the ordinance. So if there's something in the ordinance, the way it reads, and you feel that needs to be changed, and we need to hear what the change is, and we'll take it under advisement as a commission, and same way with the commissioners. You have any change that you want to, want to make? It's not a public hearing, so I'll open the meeting to, for discussion on the cannabis zoning ordinance. Anybody in the ord- on, anybody sign up, or?
Sarah Padella.
Good evening. So I just wanted to know if it would be specific to just cannabis manufacturing and licensing, or if there's an opportunity for CBD manufacturers under that license, or under the zoning? Since it's not exactly cannabis, and it's not really a food product. So that was my question, if it would be specific?
I don't know.
Uh, there are five different categories, from what I understand. And those, if, there is an ordinance. Have you seen the ordinance?
I have, yes.
Okay, so it, it will go based off of that ordinance, and, and I believe that may be a part of the manufacturing of one of those five.
Okay, because I did not see CBD in there, so I wasn't sure if that would be.
I'm not that familiar with the marijuana process, so of how it's manufactured, or the manufacturing of it, or any of that. So, uh, we will go through where that is. What our, what our intentions here is to look at what we have here for the municipal code of what's been written and recommended to us to be put in front of the council, of how, what amendments the planning commission wants to put forward.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Do you have, do you have a specific part in the ordinance that you want to?
Um, that, basically, just that I'm looking to get a CBD manufacturing license, which is different than cannabis. There's no THC in that product. It's just all of the other nutrients from the plant. And there's no license for that yet, in, in this county especially. So I was wondering if that would be considered under the cannabis zoning and licensing, since it's similar. So that's why I was asking that question.
Can we get her name, address, and phone number, and get back to you on that?
That would be great.
We'll talk to city attorney.
Okay, thank you.
You know what's coming up for actual hearing on the ordinance itself, at the next meeting in September?
Okay.
So somewhere in there, we can get the answer to your question.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
And the city attorney will be at that meeting, so if we can't get you answered through now and then,
I will be there.
You can come up and ask the same question.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have anyone else? Do we have no one else? Okay. Commissioners, any language change? I've got a couple of things, so.
Well, I had a question. So I don't see in the verbiage about, I see the setbacks and exclusions from schools and designated daycare centers, but, uh, see anything about parks? Any, any setback requires from any city or county parks? So looking at the parcels with allowable zoning, from what I can tell, you could put a cannabis center right next door to the skate park downtown Orville. Looking at the map here.
I thought parks were included.
I didn't see the verbiage of parks. And it's definitely not included in the map on buffer zones.
What specific section are you looking at?
I had it highlighted on my paperwork, at the office.
That would be on page five, item C, up at the top, buffers.
Commercial council will be five, six hundred.
And, and that's where they give you your buffer distances?
And what you want to do is add, uh?
Well, I think of, some kind of buffer from, like I say, I just have a hard time visioning a disp- A dispensary coming in next door to maybe a, like the skate park as example, because if you look at the map, that's a designated area. Or, I mean, I don't know, it's the, the Chinese cemetery is right in the middle there too. I mean, I just, I don't know if that verbiage, or has that been looked at or not? Uh, I, I mean, as of right now, I know there's discretionary action for every use permit that comes before the planning commission. But I think in the ordinance itself, that should be looked at. Uh, and I don't see the verbiage in there at all.
Okay.
So you wanna add?
I would like to at least add parks.
City and county parks?
Yes, city and county parks. And the same buffer, I think the same buffer, yeah, correct. Should apply to.
Any public park.
Any public park.
Okay.
Add that.
And I'd like to say a six hundred, my recommendation would be the same as a school or daycare center, be a six hundred foot buffer.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't, I don't know the exact limits of it, but I would like to see, um. No, no, uh, use within the downtown historic overlay. I don't know exactly how far that extends.
I believe that is in there in the conditions already.
I, I know I, I, somewhere I read that it came up, but it didn't specifically say that it wasn't, um. I don't, I remember seeing historic downtown, but I don't remember seeing anything about the, the downtown overlay exactly.
So you wanna add overlay as part of the language?
The, the historic downtown overlay, but, but I don't exactly know how far that extends. You know, I, I haven't saw the actual limits of that.
Well, most of the downtown is zoned for this thing, no.
No, it's not. If you, if you look in the, um.
Look under the, uh?
allowable zoning, it's not.
Right, it's not allowed. You see that?
Uh, yeah, but, but real- really, uh, unless we saw that, that overlay, um, I, I, I don't know if that extends down to Feather River, you know? I, I don't know how far the historic.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
How far does the historic downtown?
What are the boundaries of the downtown historic overlay?
Yes. I, I don't know if it's just our business, di- business district, or if it extends all the way. I believe it extends all the way down Montgomery, but I don't know where it stops.
Okay, well, it would be the business area there, 'cause a lot of it, a lot of that down in there is residential. But still the residential is in the historic overlay that we have to review changes and stuff to as well. But that's a residential district, so it wouldn't be allowed in that residential zoning district.
Um, yeah, but the, um, uh, the green area there is around the skate park. And if the historic downtown overlay was through there, that wouldn't be allowed. Uh, it's green right now where the gateway project would be.
Okay, that's a good comment. Uh, get the outline of the downtown historic overlay district. And, um, this map isn't accurate. I do have that i- in the, uh, front area on our zoning map. But I can't right here tell you what that boundary is. But I will get that for you, so we do know what that boundary is if we wanna put limits elsewhere.
And we can, we can discuss that at the next meeting, but, um, are you saying you want?
Uh, none.
Anything within that bounded to be excluded?
Yes.
No matter where it goes?
Anywhere inside of that area, I would say.
And so I would add that.
Okay, well, with, with the parks is gonna cover that area because one, you've got, um, the park down there, the skate park. And so that area within there is gonna be covered from it. But I'll look up that on the downtown historic district because it is in here.
Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to kinda save some of our, uh, project areas from, from that, so.
Amen, yeah. Hey, is there any other comments anybody have? I have a couple. Anybody else?
Nope.
I'm it. Okay, page one. The, uh, third from the bottom, whereas. Second line from the bottom says protect the public health. Says by mitigating adverse secondary effects. Do we define what secondary effects are anywhere? I looked and.
I guess that's contact high.
Hmm?
Would be contact high. I don't know what a secondary effect would be.
So why do we have, what, what is meant by whereas secondary effects if we don't know what secondary effects are? I mean, the whereas is part of the ordinance, but I, I just, I looked.
Okay, and where are we at on that?
Okay, on the whereas's, page one.
Uh-huh.
Third whereas from the bottom.
Oh, from the bottom.
Yep. Second line from the bottom on that whereas, says mitigating the adverse secondary effects.
Maybe I took it as like odor, so like if, if they have a commercial grow or something like that. And part of the ordinance is having to contain or mitigate the odor. Uh, secondary effect, I took that as like odor.
That's all I can think of.
That's what I took it as, is odor. And I actually had a, we've had discussion about that with filtration systems and.
It's under whereas, so it's not really part of the ordinance itself, but, um. What we're saying is that we're adopting this ordinance because of these reasons, these whereas's. And it's important to make sure people understand.
Okay.
The language and what it means.
So what I'll do is I'll underline that and get some clarity.
Okay.
Uh, uh, I, I guess I did have some things. I'm kinda thinking on the fly, uh, and it's, uh, it might kinda relate to that. Um, I believe the, uh, Shasta Lake grand jury had said something about, uh, water monitoring, um, so the water doesn't affect the sewage plant. And, you know, that, that can be an adverse, um.
A secondary effect?
Yeah.
For our infrastructure. But the, and, um, that, that's a good point to bring up.
If you say like secondary effects, such adds, enlist a couple so we get an idea.
Yeah, we, we could look at that as the, first we'll find out what the secondary effect is. And then, and then go from there and add a couple examples, which would be, um, our infrastructure. And, um, and, uh, public nuisance kind of, which would be the smell, but that's already in here. So, um, I'll take a look at that and get back so we can, uh, get some kind of a decision on the next meeting.
And that, back to what you're, what you're saying about the water. Uh, a- any commercial, um, establishment does, i- isn't it mandatory that they have to have a backflow device on the water lines?
Ab- absolutely.
Okay.
I think he's more talking about the drainage though.
The drainage?
Yes, water lines won't make it to score, you know, the sewer.
You're talking about what gets into the sewer treatment plant, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I think that's what he's.
Okay.
I don't think that's covered in the ordinance.
And as far as, this might be a question for, um, Chief Legrone. Um, as far as consumption.
It's a separate.
Well, secondary, as, as a se- you mentioned like, like smoke, or maybe I heard that mentioned. But I, from my understanding, consumption's not allowed in any public place, no matter what.
There's no onsite consumption with any of these. Secondary effects are speaking about are addressed in the ordinance. It's preamble to the zoning ordinance. It's addressing all of the things that are in there. What they're saying is this ordinance, um, by the reading of it and the introduction of all of the background in there, is contained in there. The secondary effects are mentioned, the water, the environment, the impact on your neighbors, the odor, whatever that may be. Is supposed to be addressed in this zoning ordinance. So it's just a preamble. It's not.
No, but.
It, it doesn't, nothing really hinges on that. It's a preamble to the ordinance.
What I'm saying is, are there other secondary effects that are not mentioned in the ordinance like? That's was my concern. We're saying secondary effects, are they listed in the ordinance?
That's an impossible question to answer. I mean, that's, you know, who knows what somebody's gonna come up with tomorrow? I mean, it, it best addresses them as you can reasonably address them with the known information. And so the water runoff or return to score, things like that, this is gonna be a, each one's gonna require a use permit, which means they're gonna have to recapture the water there. With this has been addressed with score.
That's true.
Right, so this is not a, uh, you know, I understand the concern. We don't wanna send bad things down to our sewage plant and cause a catastrophic issue down there. Where we kill the plant somehow by sending something down there, but that can be accomplished by any commercial operation that's not doing what they should be doing. So it will be monitored. They will be required to have all of the necessary things any commercial complex does. And I would, uh, I would also say that it would be incumbent upon this body that has those things, if this gets to that point, come before you. That you are very stringent upon what they do and how they do it.
Yeah, I, that satisfies my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Might stay there. Um, I don't know if this. Um, should we have a, another whereas? Uh, we had a joint city council, planning commission meeting, and shouldn't there be a whereas in here? Uh, mentioning that we had that meeting and, and what they did or, or whatever?
I'm not.
No, 'cause that wouldn't be a part of the ordinance.
No, it's part of the whereas's in the ordinance. So, for example, whereas the city council and city planning commission met on some, some date.
No, because no action was taken that day.
Huh?
No action was taken that day by the commission.
But.
I mean, the whereas will be when the planning commission makes a recommendation either for or against or with the changes. That would say on this date, the planning commission met and recommends not moving forward as an, an example. Or recommends moving forward with these changes to the ordinance.
Okay, that's good.
I mean, then if there was another joint meeting, then I think it would say that, then I think it would be if action was actually taken.
When action's taken.
Correct.
And that would be probably both for ci- uh, planning commission and city council.
Most likely.
And then, um. There's three places on page seven where it talks about cultivation shall not be visible from any public right of way. But shouldn't it also include any, I just wrote down, um, where members of the general public are permitted? Like in parking lots and, uh, let's say, for example, you have, um, on the Fourth of July, you have scouts and whoever setting up their thing. Shouldn't they be protected from the smell, but it's not in the public right of way?
With cultivation and smell, um, that's gonna be addressed through filtration. I mean, and it's not readily available to the public anyway. Uh, uh, my understanding, what they're saying there is that it must be done indoors.
Shall not be visible.
Indoors.
From the public right of way.
Unless you can see through walls. It's supposed to be indoors is what my understanding is, Commissioner Durling, that it's not gonna be allowed outside. No, outdoor cultivation is what.
What I'm saying is, it's only from the public right of way. What, what about if somebody's standing in a parking lot next to it, they can see it?
No, it's indoors.
No, I would assume that it, anything that's indoors, whether you're standing in the parking lot or you're standing in the middle of the street, you still can't see what's inside the building.
Yeah, that's not what it's saying. It's saying, the only restriction is that cultivation shall not be visited from the public right of way.
Well, what would be an example of where I would see it if I'm standing in the parking lot, if it's inside of a building? I guess a greenhouse, but that would.
Yeah, greenhouse.
Well, I would think that you would still be able to see inside.
Plastic walls, you know, they don't wanna.
Whether I'm fifty feet or a hundred feet, I'm still able to see through a, I, I'm not sure.
Well.
How would we tighten that down?
So all cultivation shall be indoors.
But if that's the case, then why do we even have be visible from public right of ways if it's all indoors, you wouldn't be.
We can tighten it down. I mean, what would be a suggestion to tighten it down? What would you like to see there?
Take it out?
No, I, I'd be more comfortable if it included, well, I wrote the language and you can make whatever you want. Um, areas where members of the general public are permitted. And the one that, reason I, what popped in my head was, um, four H activity going on in the parking lot or whatever. It's not just the public right of way, but it's where people can gather.
Sure, we can, yeah, that's what this means about tonight is to gather your thoughts so we can incorporate those into something that you would like to see and consider.
Yeah, I'd be much.
So if that's a, something you'd like to include, I'm sure that Gary can get that included in there.
I'd be much more comfortable.
So what we could indicate is cultivation should not be visible from in, any, um, exterior way.
I think that would cover everything.
That'd cover everything.
That would cover it. But then, another thing that we need to, uh, you need is on page five, D is your odor. So this is a portion that's also gonna control a lot of that of the design of the buildings. Because they're gonna have to have a ventilation system and a system going in there that's gonna be able to control and, and keep the odors within. Uh, you're not gonna have an odor. So, the, what the proposed greenhouse is not going to be able to control that.
Right.
Okay, um, but we can do that cultivation should not be visible from the outdoors.
Well, I, I'm just saying, uh.
In the outdoor location.
Public right of way or you can leave public right of way, uh, or wherever members of the general public are permitted. I don't know, I just, I think, uh, when I'm reading this, what popped in my head was, uh, I was raised four H and all that. And we used to have activities out in huge parking lots, you know? And then the other one that popped in my head was, um, um. Now, a lot of different organizations during, you know, sell fireworks and they have their things set up, but they're not in the public right of way.
So what I'm in, what I think I'm hearing you say is that, and I'm just gonna propose a scenario, it'd be something like the front of a, uh. You know how Kmart used to have the glass all the way across the front?
Right.
I'm a Kmart kid, so I'm familiar with Kmart. So the, had the glass across the front, and I think what your, uh, concern would be is that somebody had put up paper or something on that glass. And you can't necessarily see what's going on inside from out in the parking lot, but somebody sets up a, a firework stand or a Girl Scout cookie stand or something like that. And they're closer and you can see through the cracks or whatever. You can see what's going on, activities inside. That would be your concern.
Yeah, and that happens all the time.
Understand that.
Oh, I.
In commercial areas.
If I'm understanding.
I think the recommendation from staff was cultivation should not be visible from any exterior right of way. Simple one word change, and I think that.
You don't wanna say right of way.
No, right, right of, right of.
I just put exterior location. That's what I've written down here in red is exterior location.
That would cover everything.
I mean, you may, well, you may wanna even go fur- well.
What, one?
Why not include something to the effect of it may not be detectable to any sense from the exterior? That way I don't smell it, I don't see it, I don't.
It's even tighter.
Out of sight, out of mind is.
But that's, but that's your decision. I mean, that's, it's just an idea. I mean, if you conclude all the senses.
That's what this is all about, is discussion.
Well, I think that covers, uh, that's really covered in the odor part.
That, that's covered in the odor part, so it's covered back there, but the visibility, this is where it is for visibility of the cultivation. Um, and I think, uh, putting it out as exterior location is going to mean that you can't. You, you have no idea what's in that building.
That's better language.
Which resembles what they have in the city of Shasta Lake. You have no idea what's in those buildings.
No matter where you're at.
No matter where you're at, next to the building, leaning against the building, walking around the premises at any place, any location. You have no idea, 'cause you can't smell, see or nothing.
And I like, I like the language you just did.
That also controls, um, a little bit of the public safety end of it as well, because out of sight, out of mind. And if you can't see what's in there, you don't, you, you don't have a tendency to, you know.
Okay, and that, that comment should go under, um.
B. On page seven, seven B.
And, and nine, uh, subsection A, four, Roman numeral four. And also subsection B, Roman numeral five. All three have the same language. That's all my comments I have.
Uh, I don't know if it's in here. Is the signage, uh, what they're allowed in, in here anywhere? I didn't.
Yeah, there, there is a signage comment. They can't provide signage.
So, so it's a building address and that's it? Okay.
Well, it's under, uh, F E. Well, it's under, uh, F E, I think, is where I saw the signage, yeah.
On page five, F E. Signs, signs for commercial cannabis uses shall comply with Orville Municipal Code seventeen twenty, in addition, commercial cannabis users shall comply with the following provisions. Shine but be posted stating the consumption of cannabis can't be on the premises. A sign shall be posted on the door or in view stating that no person under the age of eighteen for medical cannabis uses or twenty-one for recreational cannabis uses is allowed on site unless accompanied by his or her parent or legal guardian, and I believe that has been stricken.
Correct, at the last city council meeting.
Yeah. So, the unless accompanied by his or her parent or document a legal guardian has been stricken by the council itself. Uh, the operation of the establishment shall require all customers to show proof of age and a sign shall be posted stating that no loitering on or near the premises is prohibited. Uh, property maintenance to prevent and detour crime, the site shall be maintained free of debris, litter, trash. Okay, that's.
That's all.
That's, yeah.
This says, uh, no organized and advertised tours shall be permitted either. That's under seven E. So, that was kinda go under signage.
I'm sorry, that, that was an F, uh, an E, F one E or?
That was, what I read was F one E, yes. What you addressed.
Yeah, I, I'm, sorry, maybe I, maybe I didn't follow it, but I didn't see, uh, I see the in, in what I have here, uh, the uses shall comply with the Orville Municipal Code. And then also comply with that. I just don't, I don't see the no.
Yeah, and.
On E, number one.
Yeah, I, I don't have, I don't have anything saying no sign.
Yeah, I don't see it either cuz it's saying to comply with the, uh, I thought.
I mean, that would mean they would have the same rights as McDonald's or, you know.
Yeah, but I thought there was an advertisement sign restriction on this, but we should, uh, let's make sure we get that in there if, if that's what you would like.
De- definitely, I, I would personally, but.
Yep.
No, uh, advertisement signs, um, okay. We'll, we'll find a place to, uh, put that review and see if it's in, if, uh.
Is there any other, uh?
Um, uh.
Changes?
Are, are we all okay with the six hundred foot buffer, or would anybody like that to be larger? Um, I mean, six hundred feet is roughly half of one lap around a track, a school track.
Well, I was thinking in terms of blocks, okay, six hundred feet was almost two city blocks, and that's plenty, in my view. You know, so you make it, you know, if you wanted a thousand feet or?
It, it's just, it's just very, very close, I, I know our town is, is, is fairly small. Um, you, you could go to a quarter mile and I, I believe it would still be okay, I don't know about the parks, but.
Well, how do the commissioners feel about that?
Yeah, that's what, I guess we're gonna bring up, so.
That's what we're here for, yeah. You, you feel six hundred feet is okay, or should it be a quarter, quarter mile, or?
You, you can offer any recommendation you like, six hundred feet is state law.
Okay.
See, that's what I was gonna ask you, I, the, the state law, we have to start there, correct?
You can start there and you can add to it, you just can't reduce below it.
Right, that's, that was my question earlier, because.
Can't say three hundred feet.
Yeah, I know, but.
Yeah, we, if we wanted to go to a thousand feet or quarter mile or whatever, that's fine.
You can offer anything that you would like to see in the ordinance and send it over that way.
Right.
Yeah, I mean.
Hundred's your minimum.
I, I just, you know, turn around a lot of tracks and stuff and, you know, when you're a half a lap of a track is, is not, not very far.
Yeah, see, I looked at it as city blocks, you know, talking about basically two city blocks and um, that's why I didn't have a problem, but it's up to the commissioners, you, you wanna extend it a little further?
I personally was okay with six hundred feet, but I just think it might get a little prohibitive.
Anybody else?
No, if the majority is okay with six hundred, then.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Can I offer another use that you may wanna consider, putting a buffer around which would be religious facilities that have twenty members or more?
Why twenty members, why not any church?
Well, the issue you would run into is you'll have people that are fundamentally and philosophically opposed to this type of an activity that all of a sudden have a church in their living room, or they have a church here and it's them and their spouse, I mean, so so in order to avoid that, just to provide some threshold, just say, you know, there's a certain number of members that are required with regular attendance that, you know, we want to keep this activity away from this type of facility or, um, this.
See, and I thought, I thought about that when I was looking at the parks on the map, but I couldn't really locate on there in the allowable use area where there were any church facilities.
None are actually identified and they're, the only things that are in red right now are schools.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, I, even in the.
Churches that exist now.
Yeah, and.
Would be within that six hundred feet.
I, I, I believe there would be some green areas limited, uh, near, uh, Myers and Lor- Wy- Myers and Windot.
Yeah, that is correct, there is a church over there, I mean, you know, I don't know them all off the top of my head, but I know there is numerous churches that, you know, would probably you see a few more red spaces show up.
I, I, I would be fine adding churches.
Good with them, yeah.
So, what, what's, what language?
Uh, churches with, uh, twenty members or greater.
I mean, I guess that's a reasonable number for a church, I don't, um, I, I, I have to report unfortunately that I don't regularly attend church, so I'm sorry, I'll try to do better, but the, uh.
We'll, we'll, we'll start with that and put it in, in the language and see how that works and, um.
Well, the, when it goes at the next hearing, everybody will have a crack at it, at the language.
Yeah.
And when it goes, if it stays, it goes to city council and everybody gets a crack at it again.
And we can bring a map back at the next one too, where we can, we can plot those things and there, we can also plot the overlay so you can see what that looks like and, and, you know, we can bring a couple variations of that with the overlay, without the overlay. That way you kinda got, I, I, I know it's hard to imagine it, but if you have it in front of you, it gives you a better idea of what you're actually approving.
Absolutely, adding the churches and parks, this map, so it's, you know, yeah, it really helps.
Well, we'll have Jesse put the map together for us, cuz we have that. That he can put that map together which shows the overlays, because it's printed and we have it in color right in the front office there.
But we'd have to do the, the historical overlay, we'd have to, excuse me, add, add churches to that and, um,
Parks.
Parks, yeah, thank you.
I think we can create the map for you with everything on it, then create the map, just, you know, let's step back and say, okay, we're gonna take the parks out, this is what it would look like. We're gonna take the, you know, or we can build to that, I mean, and then the commission can look at that and say, you know, this is, uh, the most conservative approach to this, this is what we're happy with, or, you know, we like a less conservative.
Available at next meeting, right?
Oh, sure, I bet you we can have it available tomorrow afternoon.
Now, is the state.
Bet.
Come and take a look at it.
Uh, is the state law a moving target, I mean, are they?
Yes.
It is.
It's becoming more and more, um, allowable as each day goes, I mean, the most recent change in the law is that delivery service, the state's going to allow it, whether you allow it or not as a city. It's going to be delivered. So.
Is the city guaranteed tax money off of, off of that, or there's no control of where they?
Delivery?
Yeah, you can't, you don't know where they've actually delivered, so.
This is one of those things that everybody that, um, a lot of folks that use this don't want to be in the sunshine, so it's not necessarily all that well reported. But I would imagine that the point of sale, not the point of delivery is be where the tax would be gathered, so the tax would be most likely wherever, if I called up, I ordered it, uh, you can't pay for it though with credit card because of the FDIC insurance of credit cards and banks, so, so it'd be a cash, so the argument would be made.
So, why wouldn't that fall, okay, so, i- if you, um, I don't know, you, you have a, a distributor that's now outside all the areas that we said, but they deliver it to within a hundred feet of a school. Is that, I mean, how does that fall?
It's permissible.
Really?
Sure, you can deliver it there.
Cuz the sale happened somewhere else.
Right, well, it, it, none of this prohibits, you know, you can be in the downtown overlay and have it in your home. I mean, or you can be right downtown, you can be right over here and have it, it's not prohibited from you possessing it, it's prohibited from us opening, not us, but somebody opening up a business and doing that.
If your state law says you can't, you have to allow them to cultivate it, I guess, in any residential with permitting, permitting.
Well, cultivation is allowed in the city of Orville right now, I mean, it has to be done indoors, there's a, a regu- um, in ordinance for that. I mean, to date, nobody's coming in, bought a permit or a license or anything else to date, and that's been on the books since two thousand and eleven.
Well, indoors is, is, has to be covered, it can't be in a, in a greenhouse, so to speak.
Right, I mean, it, it would have to be, you know, what we envisioned when we wrote that ordinance was some sort of tough shed, uh, situation where it's secured and it's not accessible with the proper, uh, filtration, ventilation and things like that, nobody has. And I think that what probably took that off track was that you had to come down and get a license from me and then you were subject to regular inspections, which I think that probably pushed it in the other direction, cuz in two thousand and eleven, the Compassionate Use, uh, Act and also with Proposition sixty-four's passage, you know, hadn't even been brought that far forward yet, but this is the point in time we're at now, where this is what's going on.
Thank you, chief.
Uh, possibly a discussion on a smaller buffer around re- family restaurants or restaurants or, you know.
No, I think, not to me, you, you gotta draw a line somewhere, I think parks and churches.
I just, I just think about these new, um, projects possibly coming to town, Gateway Project or, you know, Feather River and Oro Dam and, you know, having a nice new thing with restaurants and shops and then having that right in the middle of it.
Well, there's gonna be a use permit.
I.
A lot of that discussion would come under use permit.
I, I understand, but somebody pays thirty-five hundred dollars or more for a use permit, and then if they're turned, you know, turned down for where they wanna do it, that's, you know, a lot of money, rather than being able to read it in the code and then figure out they can't do it before they paid the money.
Um, so one thing is that at the staff level here, in my experience with this and, and where we're at, there's only a limited number that's gonna be able to be put on, in the city of Orville.
It's three, isn't it?
Three. They're going to be and already have been hitting me up. Um, and this is something that I'm always very out front and, um, let them know, and we have had discussions in other things is, you know, this has been brought up. Well, how do we feel about this, so I'd be quite direct with them before they paid that three thousand dollars to say, I can pretty much tell you that you don't wanna focus in that area because, um, the conditions and you have to get approval by everybody within three hundred feet that you're gonna put this in there because that's a condition, right? And, um, that's gonna be difficult.
Okay.
I- in a situation and setting like that.
That, that, that sounds a little bit better.
Works, yeah.
So, I'm not, I'm not one that's gonna take someone's money if I see a failure go- looking to happen.
At least warning them.
Yeah, I'm going to give them ample, you know.
Well, if you say this is not likely and that, and would this be something that would be going through the DRC committee also? Cuz that's where that, that's why that.
It wouldn't go through the DRC because it will go through us here.
Well, a lot of things go to the DRC that come here.
Yeah, but.
Why can't we have in the ordinance that, uh?
Well, the DRC is kind of a, the whole, me, you know, one of the reasons we did that is kind of a pre-application meeting and that's why we were, the intent was.
Oh, I see, I see.
And then that's where we would say, that's why we have two planning commissioners there, city staff, um.
Maybe we should have that as part of the ordinance.
Well, well, th- there's still an expense to that. So, what I'm indicating is they come into the counter and talk to, uh, staff prior to and at that point, we can let them know, you know, I, I would kinda focus elsewhere because these, this is your, uh, probability in that location. And one is by the time, uh, Gateway gets going and a lot of these other places and this gets approved, they're already gonna be established somewhere else, so um, the likelihood of them going to one of them newer areas is going to be slim.
Do we know what kind of vetting screening process, you know, you, let's say you get a hundred applicants, I don't know, you got three dispensaries. Do we have a process set yet on how they get vetted?
We haven't gone to that point yet, um, that will be a topic of discussion once we get past this point and obviously, um, chief will be quite involved with that and, uh, and the council as to how we're going to, uh, screen that. Um, obviously, we have a line of people that have a plan but when reality comes, there's only going to be very few that's going to be able to afford to do and, and operate the system.
Okay, is there any other suggestions from the commissioners?
So, will there be a group of people that, that check this out, I mean, if you, if you're an advocate and, like he says, there's a hundred, do you already have a group in place for that?
No, no, what will happen on this is we, we will work closely, uh, if this ordinance is approved and it does move forward, we will continue to work with our consultants, SCI, and we will have them present us an application and screening process. The reason being is because we don't need to fall in the pitfalls that other communities have, have already done this, have done. So, we're gonna have them bring the best practices and then we will refine that from there. Uh, I would recommend that probably through the application process that we have a council person on there, uh, someone from the planning commission and everybody that they're going to have to see, something similar to the DRC.
That's right.
We would do something similar to that to make sure that this thing is vetted through e- everyone because there's no point in getting
That's what I was saying too.
Complete and then find out that this doesn't work for one of the bodies.
Yeah.
Well, as a former developer, if I were gonna try to establish one of these, I'd definitely wanna go to the DRC before I go spending a whole lot of
I, I think.
Plans and.
You know, I think the biggest thing of concern to people, what I'm hearing is that the, the thing that's causing people the most angst is the dispensaries. Um, not necessarily the manufacturing or the industrial aspect of it, the testing, things like that. I don't think that's going to bother too many people too much. Cultivation, if you had a big plantation going, I'm sure that would upset everyone, uh, outside, I mean, so I, I, I think the main things that we really need to focus really tightly on when it comes to this, uh, committee would be the dispensaries, to make sure that those are appropriately signed, the um, I visited one and the one that I visited, I seen what the sign was on the outside, it said five three O Collective, so, you know, I had a hint that, okay, collective, kinda have an idea what those things are, but when you look through the front and it was glass, it's just a couple couches and a counter. Um, degraded at the door by security when you come in, and believe me, you know what's in there once you walk through the door, standing out front. You don't know, but as soon as you get in there, it's a, if you've ever smelled, uh, cannabis or marijuana, it's obvious what's in the building. So, but I, I think we really, um, I think that's probably, you know, we got three of these that are going in. The manufacturing side of it, it's all gonna be down in the lower part of the green area there in the industrial area. And to answer the young lady's question from earlier, CBD manufacturing as part of this ordinance would be allowed.
Hmm, right, under the manufacturing.
Correct, it would be under the manufacturing portion of it, it's, it's an allowed use under, uh, I believe it's, I can't remember, it's five something of the uh, city code that would allow that, um, allowable use.
So, same thing, when it comes to that time, she can put an application like anybody else.
The manufacturer, not as a dispensary.
Go through the due process.
Her process was to, I'm going to, um, refine down cannabis to extract the CBDs to make some sort of lotion, cream, spray, uh, what, how it roll on, whatever, you know, that product was, it would be underneath the manufacturing one, and then she would have to take it from there to a distributor who then would in turn, uh, it would be sold at a collective. Or, I'm sorry, a dispensary is what they're called. So, that gives you kind of an idea of, of that, if that helps.
Chief's a little more experienced than I. Chief's a little more experienced than I am.
Hey, the young lady, you, you raised your hand, do you wanna make a?
If, if I could a- address that for you, that's criminal activity.
Yes.
We're talking about a, something that. Uh, depending on how you look at it, um, this is something that has been approved by the people of State of California through Proposition sixty-four. We're not suggesting that anybody should be allowed to produce cannabis inside of a house like that. This, uh, that would be something that would be a police matter that would still be dealt with on a criminal level.
Hey, is there any other recommended changes to the ordinance?
Not that I could see at this time.
All down, all the changes down?
Yeah, I've got, uh, I have written down on some of the co- the changes and, uh, we'll make our edits to that. Uh, would you, would the commission like to meet one more time before the twenty-seventh? Or, um, I mean, I can make the changes. If I can get a word version of this, I'll try and then email it out.
I would be okay with that and, and get a copy of the amended, um, you know, the, uh, new overlays with the, with the setbacks that we're recommending.
Uh, you don't, we don't need to meet.
Okay.
That's it, um, I'll close the discussion on this item and we'll move to director's report.
I would like to.
Commissioner Darlin, if I could, we, I don't know if anyone from the audience wants to provide you any input, but there, there may be folks.
I already asked for that.
Okay, I just, I didn't catch, I've been up here filibustering, so I didn't know if anybody else wanted an opportunity to tell me to sit down, shut up.
No, we had, we gave the opportunity to anybody.
I was, I, I greatly appreciated your filibustering.
Step up here if you wanna comment.
I'm Paul Riley and I just had a question if, uh, if it was, uh, to be grown indoors. How would you, literally grow it indoors if you, if that's criminal activity, grow inside a house, I was just curious.
Talking about regulated and unregulated, growing indoors on, through a regulated process that you're licensed and permitted to do. Is permitted under Proposition sixty-four, it's something that can be done, this ordinance would regulate that. Someone who is, just has three houses and they have it boarded up and they're growing inside, that's a criminal, uh, that's a criminal activity, they, they can be cultivating like that.
Okay, I, I understand that, that makes sense to me.
Uh, to help you out there too, there's, uh, special zoning areas and zoning districts that they'll be able to do that. And residential is not one of them.
All right, let's move on to director's report. You have anything? I got a question.
All right, fire with your question.
It looked like on Staples Building.
Uh-huh.
It looked like they're doing something there or somebody's.
Uh, on the Staples Building, the question is, it looks like they're doing something on the Staples Building, yes, they are. They are, uh, that's a goodwill coming in and, uh, it's in the framing stage.
Okay. Now, is that, that obviously be part of the proposed development for that whole area?
Um, it is, but right now that's, that's going in, at this point in time, um, there is a, a hold on that corner. Because Delta Dental was gonna come in, which would have, um, made that deal push and pursue through. But Delta Dental has since, I guess, pulled out, so there's a little hold on that corner area.
Anything else from the director?
Uh, one thing that, that I do have for, uh, was at the last meeting, it was brought up about an email that was sent. From, uh, an individual on a conditional use permit for the tattoo. And, um, I had asked to be forwarded the email, the email was forwarded. I did indicate to you that I would reply to your e- to the email, but in reading the email. Um, I don't have time to reply or respond to that. Um, it's quite interesting as to what I seen and, and, and read within that email. I do have staff here that, that can witness, um, the activity and the actions that were taken by the applicants. Um, with, uh, throwing broad shoulders and F bombs and everything else. Coming in, um, to the counter and having to be asked to relax. Uh, this is because he was red tagged, caught working without a permit. He has submitted the plans as I indicated, he did get, and they indicated that in that email as well. They did get, um, a correction, plan review correction. Which they indicated also in that email, but have never provided the revisions to the plan review. To get the permit, so, um, it is in the conditional use permit that they follow the minimum requirements of the code. And I believe that if we were to go meet them on the site and walk in the building, you would see that it would be totally complete. Because they didn't listen and follow that of the authority, so.
That would be in violation of the, of the use permit, wouldn't it?
That is a violation of the use permit and it is a violation of the California Building Code and it is a violation of the City Municipal Code. And in neither one of them codes can I find where it says go over the building official's head to, uh, get compliance.
I guess it'd be up to you to bring it back to the commission, I don't know, I don't know that we've ever revoked a use permit before, but I know we have the authority to do so.
And, and, uh, that is, uh, uh, something that I've been, have been considering. Because with what we've been dealing with here and once they get into business. How are we going to cro- control and get them to follow direction? Um, during that night that they came and we discussed, it was also brought up that they painted. The whole front of the building in the downtown historic area. And indicated specifically that that needed to be reviewed by the Historic Board, which is us. And, um, have we seen them? How, all we've heard is, you know, uh, they're being re- held back and not able to open. It's because they're not wanting to follow the regulations and rules within the city.
Is, isn't there, uh, procedure for revoking it, uh, do, do we have to notice them? In writing and let them know that?
Yes.
Uh, look at your, look at the, uh, use permit, section da-da-da-da says this, you are in violation. Uh, we're gonna schedule, is anything like that done yet or?
It, it has not been, cause I wanted to address you, uh, I wanted to address the commission tonight on this.
Based on the, all your conversations with them, they still pursuing down the wrong road.
Yes, and from what I understand from staff, they've come in quite hostile again since, so. Um.
Uh.
She hasn't come in and spoken to me like as indicated in the email. Um, her counterpart, her partner has and as I indicate. Uh, he, he likes to show big shoulders and, um, throw up arms and. Throw F bombs at me and, um. A, a bully type attempt.
You wanna talk to Scott Huber and make sure we're all right with pursuing?
That I will.
I'd like to see it revoked personally.
Okay, I'll, I will discuss with Scott Huber on Tuesday or.
Schedule it for the next meeting.
And, uh, and then we'll have discussion, we'll make proper notification and go from there. Because we're getting no cooperation from them other than, you know, uh, coming to you. And, um, and we approved under conditions.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to pursue that. I think you've been over backwards starting to work with them.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, any commission reports? Anybody attend any meetings we might be interested in? Okay, I'll enjoy the meeting, the next meeting is in September twenty-third. Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.